Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is February 8th, 2022, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just for all.
I'll have a brief invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for your abundant blessings and surrounding us with stewardship and a supportive community in Kettering. We thank you for the ability to engage in useful work and for the honor of bearing these important responsibilities. We are grateful for your boundless love for all of us. Please continue to give us the strength and compassion with which to serve and grant us the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Help us remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may work in harmony while serving our citizens with integrity and purpose. Allow us to fill the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. I would like to recognize the Vice Mayor for a motion.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to remove item number nine from our agenda this evening.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Okay. Do we call the roll? We can.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleepas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I think we should make it clear why we're removing that so the public knows.
Okay, go ahead.
You want me to do that?
Go ahead.
When we reviewed this earlier, we've had members of this council that were not in office as yet. And as we discussed this this evening in workshop, we just felt that there were some questions, legitimate questions that some of our new people have, and so we're simply going to postpone this until we can get all those questions answered for those folks, and then we will move forward one way or the other. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Mrs. Fisher, do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I do, ma'am. I have read all of the minutes for both the workshop as well as our meeting, and I do find the January 25 notes in order, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Okay, hearing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleepas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Lehner.
Yes. Okay. We do have a special presentation this evening. It's the State of the City address. It is via video, and you might recognize the supporting cast in tonight's video. So if you would like to go ahead and start, I should mention, by the way, that our Miami Valley Communications Council operator tonight, Mike Suprani, is here, and thank you for your assistance, Mike. The video that you're about to watch was prepared by Miami Valley Cable Council, and they did a lot of work on it, so we deeply appreciate it.
Hello, I am Peggy Lehner, and it is my honor and privilege to be your Kettering Mayor. On behalf of the entire Kettering City Council, I share with you the state of the city. Each year, one of the most important responsibilities as mayor is to share with you the successes of the previous year and the projects, initiatives, and service improvements we have in store for Kettering community in the year to come. Former Mayor Don Patterson has presented the annual State of the City for the past 16 years, and he has graciously agreed to present the highlights of 2021 for all of us. Mayor Patterson, welcome back for one last appearance, and I thank you for accepting this opportunity to help present the 2022 Annual State of the City. You are responsible for much of what we're going to talk about tonight, so it seemed to me it was only appropriate to have you here to do it. As we blend the past, present, and future to fully convey the state of our beautiful city, we decided to use this space that replicates Charles Kettering's office, and we thought it was an appropriate place for us to share this final farewell address.
Thank you, Peggy. We've been friends and colleagues for many years, and it's my pleasure to sit with you and to revisit the events that made 2021 an unforgettable year.
Along with finishing your final term as mayor, after 24 years of public service, you saw many changes, a transformation, if you will, with city council this year. Can you speak about those changes?
The changes city council during 2021 were the most I've seen throughout my public service career. Women now make up the majority for the first time in history. Relationships will continue the momentum. Vice Mayor Kleepas, Jackie, Bruce, Bill, Rob, Joe, for their partial terms on council. New members Jill Hall, Bob Scott, Lisa Duval will continue to work with the residents, and we appreciate their services.
Thank you, Mayor. When you look back on 2021, what are some of the most notable highlights?
Well, I think for me, probably the biggest highlight is serving our residents. City staff, council, community partners are all hardworking for quality services for our residents, businesses, and our patrons that come to the city.
It has been a pretty tough couple of years for just about everyone. How has living in Kettering made living through a pandemic easier, if at all?
Well, it's not been easier. Kettering is home. Kettering is a vibrant, flourishing community that keeps getting better with age. We celebrated successes despite the challenges. Employees and businesses are thriving and benefiting from reinvestment, and commercial properties remain in great demand. Our residents enjoy being part of something bigger. Residents enjoy being part of a community, and the census is a good example of that. Near the end of 2020, we asked our residents to participate in the U.S. Census to not only get a better position of our city for funding opportunities, but to get a clear makeup of our city. And nearly 80% of our residents completed the survey. We did it as stakeholders invested in our community. As the 13th largest city in the state of Ohio with a population of just under 58,000, Kettering's 65 and older population accounts for over 18% of our residents. Of course, we have programs in place specific for seniors, such as our Kettering Connection at Town and Country and the Latham Center, but we always can do more. We have a varied population for whom we do the utmost to properly serve, and we're grateful that our residents help us to measure these groups and help determine the needs of each group.
Yeah. We all felt the impact of the pandemic in 2020. How did things change for 2021? More of the same, huh?
Slow, steady, and willing to adapt to the demands of the pandemic, and that's basically what we had to do. We welcomed back summer camps, concerts, and fun days at our water park and our splash pad. Federal COVID relief funds and community partnerships allowed the city of Kettering to work closer with residents that were negatively impacted by offering rental assistance, home buyers' assistance, and help with home repairs. We listened to the people, and we did our best to help.
Redevelopment and reinvestment are important part of Kettering's growth and appeal. Were there significant projects during 2021 when everything seemed to be at a standstill?
Yes, there were. We placed a great deal of focus on attracting new businesses and helping those already in Kettering to grow and thrive. Kettering jobs support the livelihood, the infrastructure, and services that we in Kettering offer. The Miami Valley Research Park continues to thrive. Community tissue services, 132,000-square-foot facility, created more than 200 jobs in the manufacturing and support fields. CTS is on the leading edge of new graft development and biotechnology. Life Connection of Ohio purchased nine acres at the intersection of Woodman and Research Boulevard. They're a nonprofit that promotes organ donation. Payroll is expected to double in the next three to five years. Industrial commercial properties purchased four buildings and 28 acres at Miami Valley Research Park for $3.5 million. The city built an access road, or we named it Donation Circle, in conjunction with the sale of about eight acres to the Life Connection of Ohio.
I suspect that having both a tissue center and an organ center is probably unique, and there's nothing else like it in the country.
It is unique, and they're there together because they work together. And while they were looking for a new site in the tissue center, being there was a natural fit. And Kettering Business Park continues to thrive as it employs nearly 1,000 people. Kettering Health opened two new facilities in June to make health care easier for our Kettering residents and the region. The first was an on-demand center in the Town and Country Shopping Center. Kettering Health also opened a service more inclined to my use, called its Years Ahead Center. This new medical office building focuses on senior care and will house more than 30 jobs. Kettering Health also purchased the former fire station from the city of Kettering along with more than eight acres of ground on Tate Road for $285,000. The city also sold a former fire station at Town and Country for $25,000. Town and Country plans to incorporate the site into the shopping center for redevelopment and improvement.
And I'll point out that those properties were available because of the beautiful new fire buildings that Kettering did, not last year, but the year before that. That's got to be something every time you drive by those, you think, wow, those are pretty cool.
They were things that we needed, and we're proud, the team's proud, so yeah. On that same line, Casano's Pizza King is expanding its operations at their East Stroop Road location, and they'll be adding 25 new jobs. We welcomed a number of small businesses during 2021, because we do ribbon cuttings, as you know, is try and thank these small businesses, even the larger businesses, for choosing Kettering. You know, they could go anywhere, and they've chosen this community.
Smart choice.
I think wisely, like you said, so that was good.
The city offers a lot of programs to attract those new businesses and provide assistance for those that are already here. Do you have any examples of the kind of help that the city can provide?
Sure, we have a number of programs. The Kettering Incentive Program, which we established in 2010, which incentivizes companies that move into our city with the expectation that they'll bring an established amount of jobs and payroll and make a commitment to longevity in Kettering. The city also works with the Dayton Development Coalition, the State of Ohio, Jobs Ohio, to ensure that all applicable incentives are secured through the state for our new, our growing companies. We Care Arts received a Wilmington Pike Improvement Plan grant to paint the facility, add cedar accents to the facade, and upgrade landscaping. Unfortunately, we learned in November that Tenneco would be winding down over the next few years, leaving Kettering by 2024. We're working with agencies throughout the region to ensure... We do everything possible to help these employees, but from taking a negative and turning it into a positive, that's an unbelievable facility over there. And in talking to the owners of the building, while they're disappointed, they feel good about not only bringing the same amount of jobs back, but to actually expanding it.
Right. Don, is the city of Kettering near 70 years old? How has city council made investment in infrastructure a critical priority?
Well, it is a critical priority. The capital improvement program, what we call the CIP, continues to be an emphasis for city council. The proposed 2022 CIP budget is $15.7 million, of which, yes, it is, of which $5.9 million will be funded by outside grants and reimbursements. We'll complete more than $6.5 million in roadway improvements, leveraging the city's investment with about $2.4 from outside sources. This program includes residential asphalt street resurfaces funded in part with revenue received from the state gas tax. Dorothy Lane ADA curb ramp replacements. You have the Uwet Avenue bikeway work, the Smithville Road resurfacing between Wilmington Pike and the North Corporation lines, four road resurfacing between Smithville and Woodman, and Poland Farm ramp repair, also Phase II renovations at Rosewood Art Center. Public safety infrastructure upgrades continue to be a major emphasis in our capital improvement program and will into the future. Kettering Police Department renovation in 2021 at the Government Center, it was an $8.9 million project, and it brought the facility up to modern standards, improved and expanded functionality of the existing space, expanded the operations of our public safety dispatch center, and created new combined entrance for visitors to the Government Center's North Building and to the police headquarters. That was the final peg in the public safety renovation, because as we pointed out earlier in our talk, we're approaching 70 years, and fire stations needed to be modernized in the police department. Last year, we finalized that, so our residents should feel good about our public safety facilities, which attract new and good and qualified people because they have the ability to work in a place that provides them those type of services.
Truly Ohio's finest.
Yes, yes. I used to put that on everything I would send, send to the chief, and I still, when I text him, end it with that, and I truly believe that.
Live up to our reputation.
They wear that with pride. One of the other things that we were able to complete was Ridgeway Bridge. It included public art installation. Landscaping will be completed in 2022. Garten Studio, they designed the artwork to reflect the flowering landscape of hills and dales Metro Park in Kettering, so we tried to tie all that together.
It's not just your average bridge, there's no question about it. It's lovely.
We have an arts committee that likes to add a little artwork to it. Kettering neighborhoods will see improvements with our prioritized residential street repair and repaving programs. We know that our residents are investing in improvements beyond the curb. It's our responsibility to reinvest in the streets, the drives, and boulevards that connect our neighborhoods. Whether we lead projects to repair or install new curbs and sidewalks or just maintain roadways, the city is committed to pulling every neighborhood on a rotating schedule for improvements that prevent deterioration. Significant improvements were made on County Line Road in 2021. The project will add a lane of traffic in each direction in order to ease the daily vehicle flow, and will also extend the multi-use path from the edge of Miami Valley Research Park all the way to Dorothy Lane and Stroop Road. Ultimately, this will connect to the recently constructed multi-use path that leads to Indian Riffle Park, the Rob Deardex Skate Plaza, and the Kettering Recreation Complex. Far Hills Avenue was resurfaced between David Road and the Oakwood Corporation line as well.
Lots and lots been happening. You know, public safety is such a valuable part of Kettering's overall health and livelihood. You've already talked of some of the infrastructure changes that have taken place in the last year. Can you touch upon other changes that have been put in place to support this important service?
The health and safety of Kettering's residents is paramount. At the end of 2020, city council approved two essential items. During 2021, all of Kettering police officers were outfitted with body-worn cameras. The cameras are utilized during any transaction between the officers and the public. The Fire Department will also welcome a new and much-needed ladder truck in the coming year to replace the oldest vehicle in Kettering's fleet.
We talked a bit about preserving our aging community. Can you explain what processes are in place to help Kettering continue to age gracefully?
Well, that's the goal. At almost 70 years, we've talked about it, is to age gracefully, and we need to be proactive on that front. Efforts by residents to maintain and improve their properties are important and much appreciated. The Neighborhood Pride Awards Program is one way the city promotes these efforts. Also, the Community Development Division will continue to facilitate programs for providing quality housing to Kettering homeowners and education opportunities for foreclosure, prevention, and home ownership. The city has provided assistance for stabilizing households and improving neighborhoods through our Buyer's Assistance Program, emergency repairs, and comprehensive updates for over 40 years. The city offers low-cost loans of 0% or 1% with low or no payments, depending upon one's demonstrated needs. Also, in 2021, the city of Kettering was awarded $13.8 million in the federal government's American Rescue Plan. Planning and Development Department implemented the Stay Put Assistant Program in August of 2021. Using funds from Montgomery County, the city of Kettering implemented a program for residents that were negatively impacted from the COVID pandemic.
You know, as I hear you going through this, there is a lot of federal money flowing into Kettering, and I know in my conversations with council, everyone is very anxious to make sure that that money is well-spent. There's always a temptation just to spend it because you got it, but we all are going to be following your lead last year and continue to make sure that that money is invested well in real problems, and particularly problem areas that have been impacted by COVID.
My goal was to spend every dime they gave us. But a lot of the things that, whether you classify them as COVID-related or not, are areas that the city needed to spend money on. One great program that we were able to put together by working closely with Day Air Credit Union to provide affordable and sustainable home ownership and home improvement for Kettering residents, low-interest forgivable loans are being offered to help offset down payment and renovation costs for current and future Kettering residents. And another ongoing initiative is our Cities of Service Program, helping more than seven Kettering neighborhoods to date. Each year, on National Make a Difference Day, city volunteers and civic groups join together to accomplish the bulk of the work in a selected area for revitalization. Planning and Development picks an area that they feel has needs, and then we design a program around that. Red Oak seedlings were planted at the city's Habitat Environmental Center and the woods at Southdale Park.
The city of Kettering invests in ways to help people with disabilities. Explain efforts that are in place to assist those who might need special accommodations. Anything new?
Well, there's always something new. This is somewhat personal for me because of, you know, Marines, Marines situation, and we hired a city compliance and inclusion manager to address citywide access and inclusion matters. I can remember one of the first calls from a mother whose child couldn't use the equipment at one of our playgrounds because they were handicapped, and we went out, we looked at it, and we were able to put equipment within that park. That's part of the plus side to this program and part of what makes Kettering Kettering. So, yes, so that was a good thing.
So often, you don't even see these things until you are personally presented with them, and you realize how difficult it is to accomplish some of the just days of actions of normal living.
Well, you do. When you have a wife in a wheelchair, you notice all these things. You notice the doors that don't open. You notice the thresholds that you can't get a wheelchair over. There are little things that I never noticed, whether I was mayor or not, didn't matter. It just was things you never think of.
Right.
And things that these people have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, and we made a conscious effort to address that.
I don't think that's very common, frankly, in a lot of communities.
No, I don't know many communities that have that type of person on staff. We felt it was so important that person occupies office space within the city manager's office area. So another thing we did was assisted listening devices that were upgraded in council chambers and at the phrase pavilion. The city of Kettering worked with Miami Valley Communications Council and other member cities to purchase software to offer live captioning on Spectrum Local Access Channels 5 and 6.
Great. As you know, I have a special place in my heart for children and doing our part to help where we can. How has the city invested in our youth, particularly during these very, very difficult COVID years?
Each mayor has their own little projects, their own little passions, probably is a better word. And you had that when you were on council. You continued that at State House. Were in charge of the Education Committee in the Senate, so I look forward to that being an area where there's additional concentration on programs and individuals within our community. As you know, I come from commercial real estate, so bringing in businesses and bringing in jobs, which in turn brings in income tax, which is what cities need to do the things they do, so that was my passion. The city of Kettering provides five resource officers to the Kettering schools, what we call SROs. They provide education programs and demonstrate the human connection that's imperative for positive community relations with the students. I mean, these are young kids, young minds, and it's important that they see a police officer in a situation within their school and get to understand that they're good people. They're people they can talk to, they're people they can go to. We also have Partners for Healthy Youth Board. The city of Kettering and Kettering City Schools have been working on how to address the growing number of families needing assistance. Creation of the Youth and Family Community Resource Coordinator that works with both the city and the schools to gather resources for those in need. Partners for Healthy Youth developed a subcommittee focusing on children's mental health to encourage the community and to form parents of assistance programs.
You know, you mentioned that each mayor has their own passions, and what's interesting about this job and this opportunity is that those passions come together, and we couldn't begin to do that if we didn't have the economic development, the jobs being brought in, et cetera, that you talked about. That's why we work together, that's why there's not a single person that runs everything in the city. We come from lots of different talents and backgrounds, and together, I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Well, that's why, when you hear me talk, I try to make sure people understand that it's a team. It's not a one-man show or a one-woman show. It's a team effort, and we're able to do what we're able to do and the good things because of our team. They're 110% committed, they come to work every day. Our residents are behind what we do, support work and volunteer to make things better, so it's a team effort, and Kettering's success will continue because of the team effort.
Right. Well, you know, there's no question that our challenges have increased, but so have our opportunities increased over the last couple of years. I think one of the first things we have to do that I feel a need to do as mayor is to really assess what has happened to us in the last couple of years. For example, our 1,000-member volunteer group that have provided so many services for the community, we've had to send many of them home, and we don't have those volunteers to do some of the work in the community that we've had in the past, so we need to assess that. How do we bring them back? And we can, and we will. We will bring them back.
It amazed me when we couldn't have some of the events that these people would get in their car and do a drive-through to accept a certificate or to accept a luncheon, and the question that they all kept asking is, we can't wait to get back, when's it going to be, what can we do? Volunteers in this community will never be a problem. They are ready, and there are new, younger ones that now have opportunities to volunteer that will follow behind the folks that have stepped up for the years. But like many, COVID brought forth budgeting challenges and concerns. The phrase pavilion offered... The phrase pavilion offered a reduced 2021 season, and the city was awarded $3 million from the shuttered venue operations grant, another program in which we received money. These funds were used to offset operations for the absence of the 2020 season. Although the 2021 season was reduced by half, ticket sales were above average compared to the previous years. And the community was just plain and simply happy to see this summertime stapled back in their community and back in action. Working remotely continued throughout 2021. The City of Kettering has been strategizing and preparing for these changes and impact they will have on our income tax revenue. And that was one of the things, as I left, was very worrisome. We don't know how much our city income tax is going to be affected by people working from home. While we don't think it's going to be as impactful as maybe on some cities, it's going to have an effect. And it's going to have to be rolling with the punches, figuring out, okay, we budgeted for this, we only have that, we've got to prioritize these things, or we've got more in and we can do more things. And that was always my hope, we had more and could do more. But sometimes you had less and had to do less. So you just roll with the punches.
So would you say, for right now, we're doing fine?
We're doing fine. We budgeted with some of these things in mind, so we're cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to find a happy medium, be close to what we are. Our first priority is to our residents. But as facilities reopen and programs resumed in 2021, the City of Kettering was short-staffed. The hiring freeze was lifted to hire seasonal employees for phrase pavilion, work maintenance, and recreation complex to accommodate the concert venue, groundskeeping, water park, aquatic positions, as well as staff for summer camps. Our reduction in workforce left our pool of candidates empty as former seasonal employees acquired new positions elsewhere during the pandemic. Creative marketing, working with local schools to attract teachers, students, supervisors at the recreation complex, guarded pools, and led camps. Parks Division supervisors took to green spaces to close the gap. We've taken action to increase our competitiveness in hiring. Wage scales for seasonal employees were elevated compared with hourly pay that was being offered to similar positions elsewhere.
Sounds like it's been really important to be nimble, flexible, and creative, despite the challenges that we have faced during the past couple of years. It feels like Kettering has continued to thrive. Is that true?
It's absolutely true. As far as a community and as far as Kettering, you can knock us down, but we're always going to give back up. And we're going to be better. We're going to be smarter, and we're going to do more things for our residents. And there's no pandemic that is going to do a permanent image to this community. People, relationships, and human connection solve all of the problems. And in my 24 years, I had the opportunity to witness that and for 16 years, lead that. And that was good. And we'll get back to that and be better for it. Peggy, I've done all the talking here. What are your plans for Kettering as you begin your mayoral term?
Thank you, Don. First, let me say, this community is so much better for your leadership.
It's a team. You will find that out. And it's all the people in this building. It's all of our 58,000 residents out there that pull and make this community what we are. I hate to discourage you and let you know, you are not it. You are up there, and you're in charge of taking that leadership and bringing this team together and getting this team to pull on the same end of the rope. That's your job. You'll do great things. I look forward to that.
Well, thank you. You know, it is a challenge, but I have this strong sense, and I feel it from the whole team here, that we're going to get through this, and we are going to be the better for it. It's giving us an opportunity to reassess everything that we do. But I think overall, this community is well-positioned with people who have a passion for the community. I think our budget is as healthy as one could ask for at this particular point in time. So it's kind of a question of moving forward with what we've already been doing. I'm certainly not coming in here with any grandiose ideas about getting rid of this and adding that and all that sort of thing. I think right now, slow and steady is called for, and that means to continue to work on those things that we have committed ourselves to, whether it's the volunteer program or a wonderful season at the phrase or improving our schools. These are all things that we are committed to doing. And I know it means a lot to our citizens to be able to hear you review this last year. And so thanks for being here.
Absolutely.
And on behalf of city's council and staff, thank you for allowing us to serve you. God bless you. And I cannot let this opportunity slip by to thank the person who is most responsible for putting together the State of the City address, and that's Mary Asbell. Mary, if you'd like, come over here. I've got a little thing for you. Mary put together the script and put everything in that we wanted to have in there. And we didn't always follow the script, but we did our best. Thank you so much.
Yay, way to go, Mary.
So with that, we will move on to see where we are, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening, so we will move on to public comment on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Are there any citizens wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we will now move on to ordinances in second reading. There are no ordinances in second reading, so we'll move on to resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for insurance and other related benefits and the administrative services for the employees of the City of Kettering, Kettering Municipal Court, and the Office of the Clerk of Kettering Municipal Court. It is requested by the Human Resources Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. I'll call on Mark Schwederman to further explain.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to begin the negotiation process for our benefits program for city employees for the year 2023. So we certainly get an early start on this, but this authorize all of our conversations that what we had throughout 2022 to offer a benefits package in 2023 regarding our insurance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of Mr. Schwederman? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for property maintenance at Kettering Business Park. The estimated cost is $65,000. That is the amount that is budgeted. It's requested by Parks, Recreation, and Culture Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Could we hear from Chief Rob? No, this funds also, Mark. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Several years ago, the city began contracting out services at the Kettering Business Park related to our landscape maintenance. This resolution will authorize us to seek proposals and bids for that service in 2022. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes or an approved cooperative purchasing program to purchase a medic unit. The estimated cost is $347,000. The amount budgeted is zero, and this is requested by the fire department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Chief Robbins, would you care to comment?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the fire department to purchase a new road rescue medic unit, power load, and power cot system. This medic will replace a 2008 medic unit, which is equipped with a manual cot. The medic is expected to take longer to build due to supply chain issues, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of the chief? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Ms. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
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 Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
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 Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the renovation and construction of pickleball courts at Kennedy Park. The estimated cost is $244,370.15. The amount budgeted is $50,000 in the CIP, and also special grants and program funds of $194,370.15. Requested by Parks, Recreation and Culture Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Schwerdeman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to continue the process to implement renovations and additions to the pickleball courts over at Kennedy Park. As you know from previous discussions, we entered into an agreement with the Kettering Parks Foundation who raised funds for this project. They have raised approximately $194,000. The city had already budgeted $50,000 for renovations at the pickleball court. This project in total of about $244,000 resulted in additional courts being constructed on the property at Kennedy Park. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Schwerdeman? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city for Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022. The total estimated cost is $566,895.65. This is being requested by the finance department. I move for approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Schwerdeman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Three or four items tonight for our supplemental for 2022. The first is for our police department. We will appropriate the 40% for the Crisis Intervention Specialist position. That's $25,525. We will also appropriate the funding for the medic unit, as previously discussed, at $347,000. And then finally, for our special grants and programs, we will appropriate the funding for the pickleball improvements, essentially appropriating the funds that have been raised by the Kettering Parks Foundation, a little over $194,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of Mr. Schwerdeman? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
There are no ordinances in first reading tonight, so we will now move on to certifications and petitions, and I would like to call on Shawna Kazinsky.
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now call on Mark Schwerdeman for the manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few items for the community update this evening. The first is just a, excuse me, just a reminder that the mayor's award for volunteer service, the applications are now available, and you have until March 1st to submit an application to recognize a volunteer in our community. Applications can be obtained and questions can be answered at our volunteer office at Our city income tax department is up and running with the new tax returns being due for the 2021 tax year. The filing deadline this year is April 18th, and as always, you can get assistance from our tax department in the North Building here at 3600 Shore Road. No appointment is necessary. They're open from 8:00 to 5:00. We recently received updated guidance from Rumpke regarding recycling, so just a slide to remind everyone to utilize the resources at Rumpke to determine what is allowed to be recycled, but to also remember that we do have curbside recycling through our Rumpke agreement. If you have any question on what is recyclable, you can contact the city at 29TRASH. The city of Kettering's administrative offices will be closed on President's Day, February 21st. However, there will be no delay in trash service, as Rumpke will operate a regular schedule that week. I'm sure everyone has heard by now, but at-home COVID tests are available through United States Postal Service, and you can go to USPS.com to order your at-home COVID test kit. The last slide I have for your honor is, simply stated, a storm update. I just wanted to give everybody kind of a recap of the past week's weather event. The snow stopped falling mid-morning on Friday, and shortly thereafter, our main thoroughfares and collector streets had been addressed and were clear for traffic. Late Friday afternoon, we began going through and plowing and salting our 52 residential districts. We worked in those residential districts from mid-afternoon Friday through the night into the early evenings of Saturday, and at approximately 8:00 PM on Saturday, our crews were sent home, and the majority of them did not work on Sunday as well, as we had completed the cleanup process. Obviously, this storm was a little unique in that it was preceded by a lot of rainfall, which did not allow us to put any de-icers down before the snow started to fall. The rain quickly went to sleet, and so we had a layer of ice on the roads, followed by the snowfall, which certainly made plowing, especially in the residential districts, a little bit more difficult as we got into the later hours of fighting that storm. The crews did a great job, and we laid down about 1,700 tons of salt in that period and used over 10,000 gallons of liquid and chemicals to help with the treatment. We've already received restocking of the liquid components and have ordered for restocking of our salt components. So we are currently handling trouble spots, as well as crosswalks and things of that nature related to pedestrian traffic and the school system. So you will still see our crews out doing some snow removal work. With the cold temperature and now the rising temperatures that are coming this week, we will also see the regular occurrence of water main breaks throughout the community, and we've seen a couple already this week due to the changing temperatures, and starting tomorrow, the temperatures will get up near 40, and we'll see additional melting. Would like to remind our residents that if they have any questions regarding snow removal, they can contact our public service department or our city manager's office, and we certainly appreciate the community's patience during the storm as we restored the streets to an acceptable level for traveling through the community. Our snow removal plan is based upon getting first our main thoroughfares cleared, and we do that while it is snowing, and then after it stops snowing. Then we move to our collector streets, which are essentially the streets that connect our neighborhoods, and then lastly, we move into the residential districts for the completion of the removal program. So at the onset of the storm and as soon as the storm has stopped, our goal is to get you safe travels to a major thoroughfare and a collector street. You may have to travel over some impacted residential streets to get there, and then ultimately, we end up in the residential streets. One last item I'd like to mention tonight is just as the temperature warms, we encourage our businesses and our neighbors to clear their sidewalks and make it easier for our kids to get to school, and make it easier for folks to get to the bus stops as well. We, as a city, are also working on that. We have been impacted by the ice on our own sidewalks that we maintain, and we're working to clear those as well at all of our facilities and surrounding our facilities. So that is my storm update, and hopefully the warm weather will bring clearness to our streets here over the next couple of days, and that's all I have for the community update. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your report. At this time, if you would like to come speak before city council, please come on down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit, and speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council? I'm not seeing anybody, but we do have a Boy Scout in the audience tonight, and thank you for coming tonight. Are you working on a badge?
Yes, I am working on a American badge for the community. I have to attend a council meeting for a school board, so there's a council meeting tonight, so I decided to attend, and I have to break down a meeting.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Good for you.
Ask you that. Thank you very much for coming, and we glad you chose us over the school board. We're in competition, you know. So thank you. All right. So if there's no one who wishes to address council tonight, I'd like to move on and see what council members would like to report. I think we'll start with our vice mayor.
Mayor Lehner, I'd like to congratulate you for the most informative state of the city. It was very good. Good rundown of what happens. We work from day to day and don't realize in reflection what all has been accomplished, and so that was excellent. And I will also uplift all of our snowplow drivers. I know everybody wants to be the first street cleared, but they have done an exceptional job. They worked tirelessly. Mark gave a good rundown, but I would surmise that they got minimal sleep on those three days. They were back-to-back, and they did an exceptional job. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Klepass?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna have to also say a couple of things that Mrs. Fisher just mentioned, but I do want to add to congratulations, the mayor, on your first State of the City address. I thought it was very, very different than past State of the Cities, and it was refreshing, and I look forward to seeing you on Channel 7 with the new talk show, The Mayor Talks. That was very good.
I'm sure they're gonna run every minute.
Also, a couple of things that the manager said about the storm that I picked up on. He called it a very unique storm. We went from rain to sleet to snow, and from that standpoint, you know, the main roads were pretty well taken care of, and once you could get out to them, the street department did a great job of that. Now, you know, I live on one of those impacted streets that are still a little impacted, so we still have some work to do with the weather driving away a lot of that snow, but what a special job they all did, and I agree with Mrs. Fisher's comments. I did have two meetings scheduled this week with the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. They were both canceled because of the storm. And the last thing I do want to mention is get out there, get your COVID shots if you haven't yet. Wear your mask at shop Kettering. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Klepass, and Mrs. Hall.
I just want to start out by saying Hoot Day. I'll be cheering on the Bengals this weekend, along with a lot of the city, and really enjoyed my first month on council, and I continue to learn about things like the Partners for Healthy Youth that was mentioned in the State of the City. I had my first couple of meetings with them as the council liaison this week, and it's one of the first community initiatives that's taking things from the schools out into the community for the well-being of children to improve educational outcomes. So they are addressing some of the wellness challenges that kids face today, and we're looking for community partners, such as the Boy Scouts, who might be interested in joining with us on the Partners for Healthy Youth, and I think it's one of the things that make our city great. I think our city can be a place that youth continue to thrive through programs like this, and I think that with all the things happening mentioned in the great State of the City we have going on, we really have the opportunity to be one of the most desirable places to live in Ohio, and thank you so much for the update tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Scott?
I want to support what Ms. Hall said. As a suffering Bengals fan since the founding of the franchise in 1968, maybe we'll finally break through. I also happen to live on one of the busiest streets in the city of Kettering, and I will augment what Mr. Schwerdeman said. The street department did a fantastic job with the snow. That was a tough challenge for them with the ice and the snow. During the presentation, we made mention of Kettering volunteers. We like to do that. I'm gonna bring attention to a non-sanctioned, I'll call him Kettering volunteer. After the storm this past Friday, a gentleman on Wilmington Pike has a Kubota tractor with a front-end scoop. He went up and down Wilmington Pike, digging out residents' entryways to their driveway. He would not accept payment. Okay, he just did it to be a good guy, and there's a lot of elderly people on that part of Wilmington, and they simply couldn't hand shovel it out. So pat on the back to this gentleman. His name is Jason Matthews. I wanted to give him a shout-out in front of the city. We also talked about our staff at city Kettering. I'm gonna give a shout-out to someone who went unsolicited, above and beyond the call of duty. I was at the city offices a week ago Friday, had a meeting with Mayor Lehner, and some another this city employee knew that I also had a double meaning for being here. I wanted to go next door to the North Building and get the dog tags for my two dogs. Well, during my meeting, this person somehow or another found out that I was here for that and took it upon herself to get the form and help me get my dog tags. So to our own Shawna Kazinsky, thank you from the Scott dogs, Sparky and Gabby, for getting their license.
I love it.
And then I found out I had gone and stood in line at Petco to get mine. She didn't get me mine. But next year...
So first of all, I don't understand why y'all aren't renewing your dog licenses online. The easiest way to do it, I'm just saying.
It's an age thing.
All right, all right. So first of all, definitely thank you to the crews this week during the storm. Amazing job. I also live on an impacted street, and I will be honest, I need to go out and shovel, so feel free to come over to my house if you'd like, but this crew did an amazing job. Thank you very much. Mayor Lehner, wonderful job on the State of the City. You did great. You and Mayor Patterson, that other guy, did great. So I am pleased to announce tonight that the Board of Community Relations, in conjunction with the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, we are working on plans for the city's first official celebration of Juneteenth this summer. I'm very excited to be a part of the work to bring this to fruition, and I appreciate the leadership of the city and the city staff for recognizing how important this holiday is to many in our community. So thank you, and I would encourage everyone to do a little research, learn about Juneteenth. It's something that a lot of us weren't taught in school, but it's so important. Read up, learn about it, and help us celebrate this year. We'll have details coming. We're very excited about that. And I'm also happy to say that the Board of Community Relations was part of putting in motion a program for utility assistance for some of our residents who might be struggling to keep the heat and the lights on. Details will be coming about that soon, but thank you to Mr. Schwerdeman and everyone in the city staff who is helping with that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last but not least?
No, you'll be last.
I'll be last.
You'll be last. I'll save you something. Briefly, State of the City was refreshing. I agree with Tony. It was well-done and interesting to watch. Regarding the snow situation, Friday morning, I, with a group of other fellows, drove over to St. Louis, and once we got out of Kettering, which we did successfully, we got there. But I will tell you that from what I've seen when I came home and what I observed in St. Louis, I'll put our streets ahead of St. Louis anytime. I mean, they're downtown, frankly. The main street was open, but after that, it was rough. We got around, but it was hard. We did have a ribbon-cutting today. We opened a new business in Kettering called The Flower Shop. It is on the corner of Dorothy Lane and Far Hills. It's the first time, obviously, I had been in the shop. It's brand-new. It was in Oakwood, and they wisely moved to our community. But I will tell you, the things they have in the shop are very unique, very impressive, and I thought they were very inexpensive. It's a great place, so I would encourage our residents to certainly take a look at that. And finally, please, vaccines and masks. We're turning the corner, I believe, but we still have more work to do. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duke. We did attend a rare ribbon-cutting. It was yesterday, by the way.
I'm sorry?
It was yesterday, by the way. You said it was today.
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
I had a good time in St. Louis.
I could tell.
Wow, it was just...
Anyway, but no, it was a really unique shop, and they have some plants in there that I didn't know existed. Some were just really fascinating plants. Snow plowing. I got to ride in a snowplow, which was always one of my life's dreams. Not really, but it was really cool. I rode along with Charlie Booth, who's been with the city for nine years, and obviously loves the city, loves his job, and we talked a lot about what members of the Public Works Department do when they're not plowing snow, and they're really multifaceted. So that was great, and if you're watching, Charlie, thanks. It was really cool. By the way, one thing I learned on it was I had never noticed the five snowplows lined up next to each other. It's really a sight worth seeing, and I think it's normally, if you're trapped back in your residential street and you can't get out, you don't get to see that, but it's a really efficient way of plowing our wider streets and our main thoroughfares. They can go down there, and with the five together, they don't have to keep going back and forth, back and forth. So that was really cool, and I was also super impressed how close they can come to the curb, and if you look at them, you see these are the sort of things you don't think about until you've had a chance. The curb cut is just right dead-on on the main streets, and how they do that is amazing to watch. Today, I got to do one of my all-time favorite things that I get to do, and that's attend third grade at Southdale School. And this is about the fifth or sixth time over the last 20 years that I've gone in to speak to these kids, and they are amazing, and I think they're amazing because they have absolutely awesome teachers. These were social studies class, third grade. I didn't think they even taught social studies, but their teacher has taken it on herself to just put together off... I didn't think they even taught social studies, but their teacher has taken it on herself to just put together awesome curriculum. To give you some idea, the sort of questions these kids ask, these are third graders we're talking about. One kid said to me, "What are the three most impactful bills you've ever passed?" You know, normally, it's like, "How, where do you work?" or something, but that type of question, and it just makes me feel really good, and it makes me feel very, very hopeful that there are some really great future leaders of the city of Kettering being born out of this school. So that was awesome. Ms. Hall referred to the Partners for Healthy Youth. I would just like to mention that they, I found out today that they're five short of potential board members, and this is a really fun, exciting committee, and if you are interested in working for the youth of our community and want to volunteer to serve on a board, pick up an application. I believe you get them in the city manager's office for any of our boards, but certainly for that one that, at this particular point in time, could use some help. So that concludes my report for tonight, and if there's no further business to come before city council, our next regular scheduled council meeting will be February 22, 2022,